Hey Chrissy.
How are you?
I'm good. I didn't say hi to you yet. I didn't want any more time to go by.
Hi Ramona.
Hi, good morning. How are you doing?
Good.
I'm good.
Sorry, I hate getting it. But I know we have a lot of people that are very interested in this meeting. So our trusty iron is stuck to the train class. So it will be in your moment here. I just want to get things kind of started. I appreciate all of you coming. I appreciate everybody tuning in online. I just want to start off with saying we received so many emails. So thank you so much for responding and letting us know your feelings on this. There were so many emails streaming through, but we appreciate it. I do want to just make sure that everyone understands just because we've called a meeting, and I don't know how it's going to go totally, but it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a change. It just means we're going to discuss everything and make sure that everything is going properly, that we're all on the same page, that we all know where the district's headed, that we have the input from the parents and from the staff, because we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make this difficult situation as easy as possible for everybody. So I just want to kind of calm some of those concerns. I know a lot of people are very anxious this morning. So I just listen to the facts and we'll kind of move forward and hopefully everybody will be good. That makes sense, but.
Yes.
Okay, so please make sure that your cell phones are silenced. And we start with our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have some reading the license paper, please?
Sure, I'll do it.
Thanks.
Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally every day in all environments.
Thank you. So today's meeting was called because Cootney County made a huge jump and went to red due to the influx in the hospitals. So we just want to make sure that the protocols and everything we have in place are working. So we're going to hear from the superintendent and some staff.
Sorry. First of all, I'd like to thank all the principals that are here. Any principal that's not here is also on Zoom in case the board wants to ask any questions specifically of how it's going in the schools. I wanted them to be here. The association president is here. He had done a survey with his staff before Cootney moved to red and took off the mask mandate, but he's also here. And then we have Nurse Judy and Nurse Kelly. I don't know if you've met Nurse Kelly. She's new this year. She has a lot of experience. She's worked in ERs and hospitals on the front line. So we just got her, thankfully, from New York or California or somewhere. Her mom's in New York, so she, that's where I learned him, right in New York. But Nurse Judy and Nurse Kelly are here as well as the administrators. So I'd like to thank everyone. The other thing I wanted to add really quickly is that I was so proud of students. And I don't know if the principals know this. And we, as Chairman Oldstead said, we've got tons of emails from parents. And I told Chrissy, I'm setting your email up to get bombarded, but I think it's really important that the board gets to hear from parents, staff. And then I was highly, just really happy that students even took the time to write in. And it was about a 50/50. Some students felt like we should require masks or some students said we should move to the level that the Panhandle Health. And some people said, no, stay in yellow. This is better. So I just felt like it was really great to hear from students to the board. So I just wanted to thank the students, if anyone's watching or their parents, for doing that. I'm going to just really quickly, I want to give most of the time for you, but I want to give you a little bit of information. I want the public to know and the admin that I did share with the board. Nurse Judy and I have, as well the nurses have, a spreadsheet that have the cases, contact tracing and all. They have been working, you know, 20 hours a day, seven days a week, the nursing staff. They have really, really done a great job in this district and they are busy all the time. I'm talking to Nurse Judy because she's the lead nurse on the weekends at nights. It just, they, as you all probably know, but they really do owe it, we do owe them a debt of thanks because our district is doing our own contact tracing. And you'll see that in the revisions I've made. I've updated this. The other surrounding districts, just the ones down here, they are using Panhandle Health District to do the contact tracing, which would probably save some hours for our nurses. But also the board had asked that we don't, I had told parents that we weren't going to share the names unless the parents said that that was okay. So Nurse Judy did clarify with me yesterday that if parents do give permission to share the names for contact tracing, then they do do that with Panhandle Health. But I clarified it in this plan. So I just have a few, before we get to the levels of operations, I just wanted to make clarification in our plan. And I have a few changes that I've done in the last, like, six meetings or something. I've highlighted it in this really bright lime green color so that the board can see. And I've done the strike through in the areas that I'm asking to change. So this is just for the board discussion. As you know, the State Board of Education updated their reopen plan. I have put in revised and I put the date so we would have that clear. That's in this opening paragraph in the top here where we talked. So this is on page two. I also did add numbers. It would be easier. So I added, linked that in. That's one change that I've done. And then clear down at the bottom. Put it down at the bottom here. Responding to the confirmed case of COVID, I did put in here, I made changes to put practice in with theory. So in the principal's responsibility, I just said assist the lead school nurse instead of having Panhandle with contact tracing investigation to determine the student that's been at the school. So I clarified that this is really, that the lead nurse has been taking ownership of that. In the second one, I put that also the same exact thing. Assist the lead school nurse with identifying the close contacts. And you might have heard that the CDC changed their contact tracing. I have verified with Nurse Judy that we aren't transitioning over to that yet. The Panhandle Health District has not transitioned over that yet. So we're maintaining our same contact tracing we're doing now. I know there were questions about contact tracing and I've put those in, some answers to those in this week's board update, but also Nurse Judy and Nurse Kelly are here also to ask for help with that. I took out, we had initially said the principals were going to do the communication. I've been doing all the communication, which I think has been helpful. So the principals aren't responsible for that. So I took this out because I put it into the district responsibilities for the superintendent or designated need to do that. Student contract tracing information sheet will be shared with Panhandle Health District if parent permission is granted. I wanted to make sure and put that in there because Nurse Judy said that that is happening. And I felt like we needed to be transparent that that's when that was happening along with parent permission was granted. And then I put the superintendent or designated need will communicate out. And then this is a new thing that I would like to talk to the board about. I have had, and I know a few of you have as well. I've had several parent questions and patron questions. Where are the cases? How many do we have? I don't feel comfortable and I don't recommend, I do not believe that we should do cases per school. I think it creates an unhealthy look when people are comparing schools to each other with cases because sometimes that's completely out of the control, but it could create some sort of stigma or perception. I do believe that the patrons and people need to know when there is a case because it's, like we say in our letter, we want to be transparent and it gives them the best ability to make decisions for their family's health. So I'm not, I don't want to stop that practice. But what I think I would like to do with the board's permission is I think that a daily update, and I sent you a list of the schools so the board would see the elementary total, middle totals, and the high school totals, then by students and by staff. So it would be a total by grade band instead of by school. Of course, whatever the board desires is what I will do. But I think for our district to be a full district and say, okay, here is a district. Those are totals. I would like to update those every day if there's a changes and put those on our website, on the homepage. And Chrissy's in charge of updating that, so she and I will work closely together. For grade band and from August 31st to present, because that's when we had our first documented case, a text alert will be sent to any affected school's parents and guardian group saying there's been an update to the count. But I will only send that text alert, the sky alert, only to where that school's case was. So the parents will have an indication, oh, there was a case, just like I'm sending those letters now. But nobody's reading the letters anymore because it's the same letter. And I just changed it. And Nurse Judy and I wrote that. It's a great letter and we do have great things for precautions and things for people, but I think once they've read it, then they know. So I would still send a text alert and then I still will send the staff alert. So both parents and the staff will know, but I'm not sending, bombarding them with that letter or just saying, check the website. There's been an update. And so the board may want to discuss that, which is why I want to tell you that ahead of time. You might want that to look different, whatever you folks think is good for our community. And then I took out the Panhandle Health here because the, you know, Nurse Judy, in collaboration with the principal, will do the contact tracing. So that are the updates that I made to that and that's it for this time. So one thing I did want to add is Jason did do a staff survey before they went to red. And we met on Tuesday afternoon. And his results with the staff survey were about 50/50. So it was like 52%, 47% something, point something. So it was pretty much statistically about 50/50. So I don't, if you want to ask Jason anything about that, I just wanted to let you know I didn't do a full staff survey just because the time was so short. I certainly can in the future if you'd like me to do a quick staff survey. I thought this input from parents and staff and students would be helpful for the board. But also I realized sometimes just a quick numerical, like how many people said this and that might be easier. So I could do that in the future. Hopefully we don't have to. Just go a step better from this point. Okay, does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I'm going to sit down and let the board discuss.
50/50 what?
Oh, for the one who stays. Thank you, trustee Kristen, for to stay in yellow or move to orange because they moved to orange. So they said 50. About 52% wanted to stay in yellow and 47%, is that right, Jason?
Yeah.
Wanted to stay, wanted to move to orange.
Okay.
And I'm sure the board will discuss, but I read, except for this morning's another group mass, I read all the emails and I'm sure the board will discuss it, but absolute majority, I didn't do a percentage. I'd say 95, 96% of our feedback said, please stay in yellow. Please stay in yellow and continue to have our kids going every day. There was, that was the majority of just the overview. But any other questions for me at all? Okay, thank you very much, Amber Lee.
Thank you, Dr. Moya.
Thank you.
Do we have the numbers right now? Can we get those numbers for the elementary children?
Yep. And I shared that with the board last night. So let me tell you, student positive case totals, elementary band is three. Middle level is six, high school band is 10. So total students are 20. Staff numbers, elementary band is 12. Middle level is three and high school is five. So total staff is 20. And again, the bigger picture with contact tracing and self-quarantine and all that stuff, Nurse Judy or Nurse Kelly can speak for that at work.
I think based on those numbers, it sounds like we put them all together in place. Working.
Right. Yeah, if you just take, you know, without diving deep into it, if you look at the Panhandle, including Spokane, and you know, I've been closely watching the news and articles and all those things to see if there was a difference in really, from my perspective, from what I've heard and read, there's not much difference between Lakeland and where we've been and those other schools and some of the other schools which have taken much more serious precautions or, you know, really locked it down, have more cases than we do. And reading, I went back through and read the Pediatric Association's full-on brief on COVID and the need for the students to be in school and, you know, the detriment of them not being in school far outweighs, you know, the whole, the lockdown thing. So.
And I think one thing that I guess some of the ones is the staff survey, the 50/50. That there's concern about mask wearing and then using like our numbers for our to monitor your current and the others. And we don't want your student teacher to be a lot closer to those small cans and they get it more in the face. So I just would like to put out there that, you know, we have a responsibility. It's state law that we provide a safe working environment.
Sure.
So I think we need to make sure those teachers have that flexibility. This is the word of the year. And they have the right by law, really, to ask people to wear masks if they feel unsafe. If they have, if they're at high risk, you don't have the right to ask them what they're risking. But if they feel that they're at high risk, I put it by law, they have the right to ask people to wear masks for a safe working environment. So I think you want to be careful, make sure the staff's aware. I don't think the principals want to speak to anything on that. I'm a cricket. But I feel, I don't know, Nurse Judy wants to speak, but how do you feel things are going?
Well, I think, I think what, I think it's just we've made a big issue out of things that are really pretty simple about how viruses spread. We know that COVID is spreading not through droplets. So if you take a spray bottle and you spray it in the air and then you take the spray bottle and put something in front of it and you spray it, it's just, it's pretty simple to see that not as many of those respiratory droplets or the spray bottle droplets are going to go through even if it's just a simple little petal. So that's just a pretty simple thing that people can do. But I hope we have a discussion more so about social distancing because that's really going to be the thing that makes a big difference in cases here, the ability to distance people from each other.
And how do you feel social distancing is going in the building?
The social distancing is to the greatest extent possible. When they can social distance, and I don't go, people remember that I did talk to the board. When they are going to pod, then I go to the building and walk it with the principal. So that's been happening. Several classrooms and the principals can see this. Several classes have had to go to pods. We've had an increase in enrollment. You know, several people have moved in directly here and athletic area, laundry area. I mean, as we've seen the construction and as we've talked about this board, people are feeling more comfortable with what, how we're running the protocols and people are starting to come back with other kids from LOA that were students coming back into the room, to classrooms. So we have had several classrooms that the social distancing, where they're six feet apart, it had to pod. They send out, as I told the board, they send out a letter to the parents saying this is going to happen. And then they put them, some classrooms, they're only podding two together instead of three. And then so they're only here two that for contact tracing that are together versus three together or four together, that we initially talked about four, five, or six together. They're going to use two. So it's not perfectly social distanced in all classrooms. It's based on the number of kids in that classroom. If it's going to push it over to where we can't do anymore and there's a lower class size in the district, we also consider that, like, okay, we will bust you down to, you know, the smaller class size at John Brown from Twin if we need to, or from Twin to Spirit Lake or such. So we could, you could ask the principals at their buildings if they have different input on that and concern about social distancing as well.
There was one concern that came through in a few of the emails that one of the high schools is not as diligent in practicing social distancing during class exchange, that there, there's supposed to be a double bell schedule and apparently that's not occurring. And so I just, I don't know if that's.
Both of them have a double bell schedule. So I don't know which high school, I read that same thing.
Yeah.
Jimmy and Ryan can stand up again. But let me just say, the other piece about social distancing is remember during passing periods, we don't do social distancing because it's not within six feet for more than 15 minutes. So there is not going to be social distancing when we walk in the hall and they don't let them go to their lockers, so they're not standing.
Well, there was also allegations that the desks aren't being maintained as far as the socially distance at the high school level. I don't know if there's any, I don't know if that's valid or not.
Yeah, and I don't think it is in my walkthroughs, but they're there every day. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like them to be able to address that.
Yeah, at the Beverly High School, we have paid in every single classroom. It's Peter's more part. We did that in August on the floor.
He went through a personally major.
Thank you.
But anyways, we added tons of session classes to the lead's department. So I can say that every classroom, social distancing is happening now. Kind of terms of all sets point. There's times where kids choose to work together and don't wear masks. And because, you know, teachers have not had the ability to request that, that's happened. But as far as contact tracing, my understanding at some of the schools, all of the close contacts have happened outside of the classroom.
Right.
So as far as social distancing during the school day, I think it's done very well at our school. And in the passing periods, to Dr. Meyer's point, there's such a brief period that the kids are in and out. There's no lockers, which is helpful for me. So really the, any of the issues regarding social distancing, I think are happening outside the building.
Okay.
That's socially earned.
Thank you.
At Lakeland High School, with the passing periods, we release half our student body and then we wait four minutes and release everyone else. We probably, you gotta know where that gets a little bit messy is when we have mixed classes. So some of our active classes have 9, 12, 13, or 14 classes and things like that.
Okay.
So we're doing our best with that piece. As far as our classes go, social distancing, I think we're way better than when we started. Our last couple of positive cases, I don't think we've had to quarantine anybody. So that's always a good sign that we're doing our part. Just hope that goes to our future, we'll do a good job as far as.
Okay, thank you.
Nurse Judy, you want to speak?
No, I just, I just think, I mean, I think that it is true that the majority of these are.
Do I, you can't hear me?
You can't hear.
I don't.
That's great. You go, girl.
So anyway, I think that we are truly trying to raise us to do social distancing higher states that give us. And I think that we just need to understand that we're going to have cases. And the concern that I have is parents don't want to, anybody can take me for caution, but on the other hand, we also don't want to, we can't have both of those things. You can't have people not wearing masks and not social distancing, not only in school but outside of school and then not having shoes. So we're going to have cases. And when we have cases, we have to follow the guidelines and the protocol. So there's going to be people quarantined, there's going to be staff quarantined. Such stuff's going to happen if we are, I mean, can't keep everybody completely sick. Ellie, what do you think? Ellie's my go-to person.
I definitely agree with you, Judy. You know, I think people aren't really understanding, you know, why they're being quarantined, you know, what the big deal is. And that's what we're just trying to emphasize, the mask wearing, the six feet. I cover four schools here and the schools that I see, their teachers are doing a great job. Their mentorship is doing a great job. But kids and students are going to be kids and students, you know, they, you know, just don't understand the gravity of this. The high school I see on lunch breaks, they're gathering together, the students. I try to talk to them when I'm there, but you know, I think that is the majority of the students that we're having to quarantine is because they're gathering during times that they may not be in class, on which we still do. Yeah. The difficulty.
I very much appreciate this. May more. I know. Talk to a lot of people as to the fact. You're very much appreciated. Thank you for all the work. Thank you all, principals, for being flexible. Maybe this morning, if we could keep moving forward. Questions for anybody else? Do you want to discuss the changes to the opening plan as far as how the communication's going to happen?
Well, I think I'm fine with the update to the communications. I am back and forth about the letter, but I do agree it does seem to be a little redundant. You know, so, and it is extra work and time and I too am appreciative of all the varying ideas and opinions, yet the district is doing a great job. And I am very appreciative of the working together, even though all the difficulties and hurdles that we faced. I think it's great. I'm fine with the changes to the communication. And I don't see any reason to change or do anything different than what we've been doing. You know, unless we see some type of drastic change. I think that for our district, I think we've been doing a great job. I think everybody's been all hands on deck. And I don't believe there's an adult in the district that doesn't have the interest of the students first. I'm good with where we're at.
I'd like to agree, but I know that that's a little bit unrealistic right now considering all of this. So yellow is, I believe, a really great place to say you guys have been doing such a good job of doing all of the protocol that's been set forth. And I really appreciate that and our numbers are manageable. And I just think that staying where we're at is a, would be a good choice for our district.
And now people get nervous about, you know, rising. They still have that online, you have the only option, you don't use them through the well. So if there's concern of that, if you really want to say, the concern that we should go with that options go there.
Yes. Take your way. We have Lakeland Online Academy, which are our district's teachers and our district's curriculum. They're doing a great job. They have online assemblies. They have a mascot. They've done a really good job of building community as a program and with their classrooms. The other thing, high school, we have the 1912 Plato Online Program and Mr. Uzi is in charge of that. He has 65, 66 students.
It's closer to 70 now.
70 now in that. And so high school students can continue to get the graduation credits. It's independent study that they work on. And so it's a little bit more independent for the high school students, but there is that option also to make them on track for graduation.
And something I keep reading, I mentioned, Cootney Health actually updated their status. And because they had so many discharges last night, they're not in the same spot that they were yesterday at the meeting. So.
They're at 90% now. And I think that they discharged people early, not because of time, necessarily.
Right.
Discharges, but they had to figure out what to do. So they, probably somebody that may have been in the hospital for four days only got a few years of treatment.
Yeah, I don't know. It was presented as a positive thing, so I'll take it as that. You know, that it, so that's, that's good too. But I think we're, we're doing the best we can do. And I think there's a, it's hard to juggle right now. My other question is, what does our guest teacher pool look like?
Very low. Brooke, would you address that? And principals can certainly weigh in about the lack of.
We actually do have a current list of 100 active guest teachers. However, we have. However, we have probably half of them are not taking assignments on a regular basis. Um, we had even one principal who tried calling, um, a guest teacher for one position, she tried to send two different guest teachers. They as well are getting, you know, the cold flu, um, scared of COVID. Um, I have called post-halls and Portland to come up with maybe some different incentive, um, plans. Um, to maintain our guest teachers. They're, they're in the same situation of, of being sure that well. Yeah, so actually Portland does this thing where, um, if a guest teacher works sixteen days in a row. Um, they're able to get a hundred dollars. Um, if they, and then there's another incentive if, um, they don't call out absent or full pay period or something. That's another hundred dollars. I'll have to verify that portion of it. And then post-halls, what they do is, um, like, for example, um, we have our guest teachers get long-term subpay. After they've given the same assignment for ten days in a row, on the eleventh day, they get it. Well, in post-halls, it doesn't necessarily have to be the same assignment. They just, they just have to continue their, simply work ten days in a row and then they get long-term subpay.
How, how long does it take to go through the process to be approved to be a guest teacher?
Oh, my gosh, we're so fast about that. Danielle, as soon as she sees an, an application come up. Um, she's sending it to me, I put in a, at our district leadership team, every Tuesday, a list of people, uh, to be approved. And then as soon as those are approved, Danielle is on the board orchestrating, you know, orientation and things to get them out as soon as possible.
It's a really quick turnaround. And if there's somebody that we can do, and we can get started and they do a quick interview, background chat, fingerprinting, all that. With like, Brooke shared with the district leadership team, on average every day, correct me if I'm wrong, twelve positions are remaining unsealed.
And that's, that's on a good day.
Well, that's on a good day. Was that the average?
It, it, that is the average.
Average. So that means twelve principals, I mean, this really is a principal thing. They have to figure out what era is going to go cover this classroom, however, every group of kids, how their, who's going to cover, are they going to cover the PAs? I mean, they, they can speak to it better, but they really have a lot of, are addressing the flexibility issue, but from the lack of guest teachers.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
I think it works as, we have the, we have three coaches.
The, the, I know a lot of their response, but we want to speak to them. It is really dire over the, the teacher, the guest teacher show, they're just tired. So, um, John Brown's P A is teaching a lot. And we have three staff members out because of COVID. And so she's teaching whole days. Um, I'm doing Mrs. Piddy, I'm helping down the questions at the end of the day. I'm not getting online work done because I'm wearing a lot, I'm wearing a lot of other hats. And I feel like it's, it looks like, but anybody else, you've got, yeah, I guess that's pretty much the norm. Um, we're using every single person in our building, um, to do everything, including studio work. So it, it's, it is a huge impact in, um, even when teachers are not, um, contracting COVID themselves. If they can't contact somebody with, when they're out. Sometimes, I mean, and so I appreciate the essential worker clause. I think that is going to be really helpful, but it is a huge impact. I don't, I don't think that, I just don't want to come across as like saying that it's not something that we need to be concerned about. I mean, this virus is real. This virus is going to spread. The more that we have people together, the more of a case we're having. It's not the impact of the person who's hit. But the people that have to quarantine, people have to go to school, they have to miss their job. I mean, I, I think that, that the impact beyond just the person that has the virus itself is, is pretty bright.
Right.
And then because economic impact is a lot of impact. So I think, so we need to recognize that this virus is real, it is not a hoax. And that we need to take every precaution, simple precaution that we can, to try to not spread it. I mean, I know that these principals have teachers that are out right now, um, either because they're infected or because they are close contact. And that's an impact on the building and it is. Um, so I just, I think we need to just really look at that as this is the real thing. Um, the hospital, the rotations are real, the deaths are real. It is not a hoax, it's not a joke. Um, it is a pandemic. Um, and we just need to all be personally responsible for that. And I think that was, they need to make sure that we are, that we are, like, making, making precautions to, you know. And that we're being safe and providing a safe working environment for it, but try to keep those key areas in classroom. So, thank you.
I think there needs to be a bit more transparency with the district as well. Um, and I, and I like Dr. Meyer's idea of sending out a message and letting people know. I have many staff members and families calling me wanting information, like how many cases do we have in our district? What is happening? Is it safe for my child to go to school? Is it safe for myself to be teaching? And we haven't been able to pass that information along. Um, and I think if we start passing that information along, maybe what Nurse Judy said is, you know, people could take this a little bit more seriously. I, I think there needs to be more transparency.
I, I mean, I think that, that when we just look at us, us, we also, many of the students in this room have older parents. Or may have somebody hired in their family. So, yeah, calling it COVID would be perfectly fine. But calls our elderly parent may not be perfectly fine. We just need to be, we need to be thinking beyond our own little selves. Because it's a community health issue and, and we are a community. So, you know, as a community health issue, we all work together and we need to remove all of this from our individual cells. And look at how it's impacting other people around us. I agree with Kelly, I think that there does need to be more community that's, that's helping here. Um, I'm getting a lot of calls of people that have high-risk kids. Or they don't know whether or not they should be sent to school or not. Um, they may have higher risk parents. And they don't want to be bringing it home. So they're trying to take the precautions as possible. But it's harder than do that when they don't even know what's going on. And they don't know, like, whether or not their school is the one that has a case. Um, so, and the letters, I think, just that we, now you have five or six cases at Lakeville High School and you're sending out five or six letters. Does that mean that there's five or six other cases? Does that, what does that mean? I think it's just supposed to be confusing to patrons. Um, a lot. So I don't know, there's something different that we could do.
Well, that's why the new plan is here. And, um, part of the problem with transparency is, we talked about this. You can only be so transparent when you have HIPAA and FERPA. So the fact of not narrowing, of not saying what classroom, other districts are saying what classroom it's in, I don't feel comfortable with that. I think, as I spoke to it earlier, I do not feel like in our size of district, that it's going to help our district-wide community to say, this is where the cases are at this school or in this classroom. I, as long as I'm contacting the parents and saying, there is a case with contact tracing, you know, trustee Thompson asked about. Nurse Judy said she cannot go back, because we had that concern. Um, with contact tracing, the person that's identified says, these are the people that were within six feet for more than fifteen minutes. That cannot be verified because of HIPAA. So Nurse Judy can't say to this person, oh, were you around? This person belonged to commence, because then she's giving the name. So when you say that you want more transparency, it's a very fine balance, because we have HIPAA and FERPA that we can't be transparent. I'm a very transparent person, but then I have to pull back and say, I'm not allowed to do that. So what I'm trying to find is the sweet spot for communication. Where do we make sure the public has the information they need so they feel like they're getting what they need to protect their child? But yet not overdo it or violating or setting up competition, unhealthiness between like, oh, that school has this, and that school, why do they do that? And then they start looking all, you know, judging and criticizing us when we're doing a really good job. I personally believe that if we, if I send a text alert to staff and, and an email to staff and a text alert to the, the parents at that school saying, just like I've been sending the letter, they know that there's a case. And, um, and then if I make update to Nurse Kelly's point on the front page that we have, here's our elementary totals by student and, and, and by staff. Middle level high school, um, and we have that, even have one online, but have that on the front page. And then that would be the totals, I think, to Nurse Kelly's point, the families would be able to see what are our members? And they start, you know, to compare to the other districts or our size and that way. I think that's, you know, being way more transparent.
I think we have to remember this is that we supplied everything we could possibly supply to be safe. Nobody's been, unless I don't know something, and I would like to know, to my understanding. There's been nobody that's requested some type of safety device measure, whatever, that has not been given that. So we haven't told people do or don't wear masks. We said it's personal responsibility, whatever makes you feel safe. If you need a Plexiglas divider, what have you, here you go. If you need, you know, sanitization gloves, what, and we have provided all that. And for the parents to not feel safe, I mean, put, put a mask on your child if that's what you want, you know? Wear a mask yourself if that's what you want. Um, we've notified the parent, they know what school their child's in. I agree that we don't need to tell everybody in the world, because we're still in this strange point where there's almost this stigma attached to a virus. That people don't have any control over, but it's almost like, you know, a, a leprosy thing or something, you know? Um, so I, I agree with Dr. Meyer in that, um, I mean, I, I don't have anything else to discuss. I'm ready to vote, Madam Chair. The board's ready to vote.
Yeah.
Um.
Right.
Well, I, um, first of all, the school district is doing an phenomenal job. I think the social distancing is probably the biggest key, because, you know, masks do stop. But you don't also have kids visualizing and touching, and touching things that there can be transmission in that regard. But I think the social distancing is probably a number one in the school setting. And you guys have done an phenomenal job. Um. What's, what's funny to me, because I work free P S, so, you know, I have to be around a lot of people when we deliver packages. You know, to way more people than we used to, especially now with COVID. Um, more essential workers. Which, you know, I have to work around sixty, seventy people every day. So, you know, when I'm in close proximity, I remember I ask and. Um. Ah. I don't know why I'm so emotional.
My mom is very tired.
No, I have kids in the school and we, you know, lost a family member to COVID. So I have, so I have personal experience, but. Educators are essential. After last spring and seeing the level of education for the kids. Um, education is essential. So I think we need to do whatever it takes, precautions, whatever, to keep the kids in school.
Mm-hmm.
Um. You know, I have to go to work every day so that somebody can get their dog clippers. Just a fun story, like, the boxer literally showed them.
Yeah.
I was a house naturally responder, so I have the authority to, and, you know, just bring me this and it's a pet clippers, you know, for your dog. So, you know, delivering pet clippers is essential, you know, educating. Especially, you know, the young ones. I mean, they're not going to get the same kind of education. So I think we need to keep the schools open. We do what we're doing with the social distancing. We need to encourage people if they feel that they, you know, at risk, take precautions. I mean, I don't see my grandparents. You know? And my grandmother is sick and I can't go there and visit her because I'm around sixty people every day. I'm not blaming anyone for that. I'm certainly not going to blame somebody that I can't go see her. It's not anybody's fault. You know, unless this is, you know, whoever created COVID, wherever it came from, whatever mutated, it's that. Moment's fault. But I made the decision not to go see her. Because I don't want to be responsible, right? So, I mean, everybody has responsibility to do the right thing. Right thing isn't blaming people. The right thing is doing the best thing that you can do. Take precautions, because everybody's, uh, scenario is different. So take the precautions that work for you. Give people the opportunity to make the right choices for themselves, but, you know, we need to keep the kids in school. You know, that's just kind of bottom line.
Yeah.
And I actually feel like, um, you know, because I'm a watching numbers and I think that having the numbers. Human, because that's a big question. And that's a big question for me, you know? And I think it's a big question for every patron, even all the teachers and administrators. So having a human little tool to kind of know, hey, this is how many cases we've had, maybe, um, you know? I mean, because we're not going to escape this. So as, as long as we are manageable, I really feel like school is probably the safest place for the kids to be. Because, you know, if they're not in a controlled environment, at least I feel like kids that are going to, that when they're in school. They're socially distanced, because are they going to stay home the whole time? You know? Chances are, no. So I, I think that we made, uh, you know, a safer place in our community. Because outside, outside the schools, outside of our homes, we don't have control necessarily of what goes on in the community. So I think, I mean, as, as weird as it sounds, um, you know, we're giving them a safe place. So, anyway, I have my two cents. And I don't want to break the rules. I don't want to follow the protocols. Um, I think that, you know. If you can't socially distance, that you should wear a mask, but what do you do? Um, but I think we've also really done a good job of, of socially distancing the kids. Altering the schedules so that, you know, the, the passing, you know, quickly in the halls. So, yeah, I mean, again, you know, I think that the teachers are enjoying education, especially with, they keep the kids in school.
Oh, and a wonderful, yeah, I don't know if you can hear this, but a wonderful backdrop, but just the irony is just talking about. We can hear the kids behind us laughing at John Brown Elementary. I think that really speaks to the point how happy they are to be back together at that school. Um, and obviously, you can tell me, we don't take these decisions lightly. We are very best in this. We, we consider all options towards, we try to make it, and make everybody happy, you know? Um, it's, you know, we've lost a lot of sleep over the years, so we don't take these decisions lightly. We do try to keep following information and try to make as many people safe and happy as possible. So, thank you, sir. So I do think we should go ahead and vote. Um, I've got permission to, um, do we need to update this? You know, it's pretty much, we're not going to.
Um, yes. I am aware that this is also on the Tuesday agenda, um, to update the reopening plan. My concern is, is our red is still at full remote learning and the State Board of Education does not want children not in school to some parameter. So I really think that our red category needs to be revised as far as not going fully remote. Um, so we can, I'm not objecting to, uh, updating the recommendations at this moment. But I would like us to look at the, at the red category and what that actually means in comparison to what the State Board of Education is recommending. Which is not doing full remote learning. So.
I'm about to take a look at that.
Okay. Yeah.
So motion towards we be, um. So, the motion for it would be, um.
You want to look at that this morning or Tuesday?
I'd like to look at it Tuesday.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, then, the motion for it is.
Do we really need to approve the changes?
Continue to approve it as a change of schedule.
Yeah.
Because I believe, I just want to make sure we're all agreed that we're staying yellow.
Yes, yes, yes.
The motion is needed on that, would like a motion of to update, uh, the changes as of right now to the, the opening plan.
Sure.
Can I make a recommendation that in this motion with any updated changes, dirt, if, end of the motion. We state with no changes to level of operation for anyone, don't even look at the minutes.
Yeah, because I want to let Stan invite the board to say that, so. Somebody else word it, please.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the amendments to the LJSD number two seven two. Fall twenty twenty reopen plan, and to stay at the current level of yellow.
I'll second that.
Have a motion second, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Great, non-motion here. I consider, thank you, I know you all are very busy, we appreciate your time, and looking forward to the plan, and thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. The levels of preparation, no changes.
I forgot to add the no changes to the levels.
She said to keep. Yes.
Hi, thank you.